Wayne, I guess you're here to tell us about the pump house.
Yeah, Nicholas called me and said if I had a chance to come on, just in case, really, if you guys had any questions about anything that maybe I could answer if Lucy couldn't.
Okay, we got the plans. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at them.
I've looked at them.
I've looked at them.
I have.
Me too. Looks like we all looked.
Sorry, Sarah, I didn't hear you.
Yes, I did look also.
Does anybody have any questions?
Has the Historic Commission and the Cemetery Commissioners reviewed this and looked at it and signed off?
I don't, that's a tough one.
I can tell you the Historical Commission is not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Which I think it's important for both of those groups to voice their opinion and add to the conversation.
Yeah, which they're probably, I mean, I am working with an architect. I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks I'll actually have a drawing of what the building will look like when it's built. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, I mean, we're trying to, in our minds, we're trying to keep it so it, how do you say it? So when you drive by the road, unless you're really looking, you won't even know it's there.
Yeah. Well, I guess the issue we face tonight is whether we should have a formal site plan review or not. And I think once you're talking about input from the other town boards, you're essentially saying, yes, we should. And that's that's the kind of thing that people would like to see. I think also if you're planning any plantings on the cemetery side, that would be good to know about, too.
Plantings. Really, what we do, plan on doing for plantings is kind of taking, we're gonna bring a tree spade in and we're gonna take out some of the, what do you call it? Probably, I mean, the tree spade could probably handle anything up to about a four-inch tree. So anything that where the building's gonna sit, instead of just knocking it out and throwing it away, we'll pluck them out and kind of put them to the side and keep them alive. And then, once the building's up, we can kind of move them back somewhere to fill in somewhere. I mean, instead of, instead of going out and buying stuff that's not growing around there, we'll just use the stuff that is growing around there.
That's a great idea.
Well, it's good to know, but I I think it would make the Cemetery Commission very happy to know that, but maybe they should.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody would like to know.
I mean, my first thought was concern about security. And so you're just trying to, I don't want too much. I mean, I know the other water places kind of use the the security level of not being obvious. So I was curious if that was this, but this is a more obvious location. So I like the screening. You're not gonna put a fence up or anything, right?
We don't want to.
No, just a gaze.
It is, it's water. You don't want anything to happen with your water systems.
Right. If, I mean, excuse me, if the day comes and the DEP requires it, we would look at putting up a fence like kind of what's there, but you can't see. You know what I mean? Like a cattle fence.
Yeah. Okay, so it's all about kind of unobtrusive, so you don't notice.
Exactly.
Good. Are you talking about a stick-built building or Morton Building?
Yeah, stick-built.
Good. Cool.
Yeah, the thinking is since the building is locked and it's, it should, and as you, hopefully, it won't be too noticeable. But it shouldn't, that should not be an issue. We thought we would put a gate just to separate it from the cemetery. But we thought that that should cover it, unless, as Wayne said, DDC insists, but they haven't so far, so. The DEP.
Yeah, I was juggling the nothing terrorist acts. I went down the dark road, but at the same time going, come on, this is Whately, so.
Good, right.
Could, could somebody just put my mind totally at ease about like noise and like reading the material about noise, but you know, booster pump and is this running all the time or are people gonna hear it, you know?
It will run all the time.
Okay.
At least one of the small pumps will be, if not some, yeah, I mean, there could be a combination of a few pumps running at a time. The pumps themselves from outside, I would say you'll never even know when they're on. The only noise you might hear is when the power goes out, if the generator comes on.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, but the pumps themselves, I can't tell you for sure, but I would be 99% positive from the outside of the building, you will not hear them.
So like if there's a big wedding next door, quonk-quant, no one's gonna be bothered by a whining pump sound?
Or burial.
No. I mean, the other, the only thing I'm, I would say the only thing you're ever gonna hear out of there would be the generator that's outside if that ever came on.
What was your comment, Tom? A wedding or a burial, depending on which side of the fence you're on.
The cemetery's a lot closer.
Yeah.
In addition to having them on sleds, is there proposed extra insulation in the building? Is that would keep the or noise barriers in the construction of the building to keep noise down?
Yeah, the, the, we're putting it on spray foam in the walls for insulating. So, I mean, it should be, you shouldn't hear anything. I mean, the, there are similar pumps that are in the booster station at Westbrook, and you can stand right on top of the cover over there when they're on and not hear them.
Okay. And in terms of the road, you've got the bituminous apron coming in off of North Street. Is the rest of the road going to be maintained as a dirt country road or is that gonna be paved?
No, we're gonna, the road to actually get into the building will be the far northernly Cemetery Road that's there now. So we just leave it all stay gravel.
Okay, we actually showed it being paved just up to the pump station, but you don't have to.
Yeah, maybe the little bit to the pump station might get paved, but I think everybody was talking, just leave it gravel, so it kind of all blends in.
That's fine.
And how many, how many trips per day in that road do you think there'd be, just in terms of routine activity?
Honestly, when it's all set up, unless something goes wrong, really, I should never have to go into it.
An optimist.
Yes. That building, I mean, there'll be, they call it, there'll be stuff in that building that will talk to the main plant down off a chest of Behind Juniors, and I'll be able to watch from down here what's going on in that building. I mean, otherwise, maybe once a day I'll drive in there just to check on things.
Good.
So do we need a site plan review or not? I don't think we've waived one since Brett was on the board, and I don't know about Tom, but
No.
we have done that in the past when we felt that the application was straightforward enough and there were few enough issues that that it wasn't necessary.
I unfortunately, we probably should. I mean, the cemetery and historical, you're right in the middle of town.
Yeah, and it's a scenic road and
Yeah.
I think also probably politically, it doesn't look good to let the town board get off when private citizens don't, so.
And it's a sacred ground.
We don't have time to put it on, on the agenda for the 27th, fortunately, because there are already three public hearings that might. But we are scheduled to meet with FERC on the 11th. And I don't think it will be a long public hearing. Would it be all right to do it after that? I understand the town is in quite a bit, would like to get this done as fast as possible, I think, at this point. Am I right? Wayne, you want it quick?
This? Yeah, it'd be nice, because I think they'd wanna, I think everybody wants to get started building.
But if it were, if we waited two weeks till the, normally, we meet at the end of, the end of the month, the last Tuesday, like.
Yeah.
And so that would be, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but you know, last week in May.
Last week in May is the 20, the last Tuesday in May is the 25th.
Is that?
No, Memorial Day is the 31st, the following Monday.
Okay, that's a help.
The 11th isn't, is, we don't have enough time to do the 11th?
Well, I don't know. If, if you don't have the architectural plans by then, Wayne, I don't. It's a month away. It's a month away.
I should, because, I mean, I've been talking with, they told me, you know, I mean, it's not a, they said it shouldn't take them long to draw something up, because it's, I mean, if you really think about it, it's really just a shed. There's nothing big about it. So they should be able to get them quick. I was just, you know, I mean, we're just trying to hash out the final, what do you want to call it, details? Yeah, I mean, like what color roof do you want to put on it? What color siding do you want to put on it? Which I don't know. Yeah, I mean, maybe it's better, you know, I mean, maybe I shoot an email to the Historical Society and the Cemetery Commission and see what they think.
Well, I think once we've agreed we need to have it, they will get notified. We'll see that they get notified. The Historical Commission does anyway.
Yeah.
And we can make sure that the Cemetery Commission hears about it. How do people feel about doing it on the 11th? It would certainly make the towns, the water boards happier.
Doesn't seem like it has to be a long conversation.
Well, we're booked with FERC at five, so we could say six.
Sure.
Does that work for, does that work for you, Wayne?
Yeah.
On Tuesday.
Yeah, whatever works for you guys.
That work for you, Mary?
Yep. That's the most important.
That's why I check.
I hate to break this to you, Wayne, but the water department, I think, is gonna have to pay for the legal ads, so we can, we can, we'll work that out.
Here goes my water bill.
Yeah.
From one pocket to another.
I know, right?
Anything else on that? See you on the 11th.
All right. All right, we'll see ya.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see.
Just us.
Minutes.
So which do you want to start with?
I, I'd just like to say, thank Mary for the heroic job of producing these minutes. They were very complicated. It's layered. It looks like it's an onion, trying to keep notes on, for people describing an onion. It's, thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
It really brings the meetings back.
It really, really does. It's a blow-by-blow account.
So let's start with the oldest first. Which way? October 27?
I mean, I guess I'll just note that in the OneDrive, the 27th of October 2020 is the first folder that has minutes in it. You don't, there are not minutes for the October 13th or any prior meeting. Except there is for August 25th.
Well, hopefully, they'll all be published online on the town website once Mary gets them in.
Yep.
So the 27th, October 27, 2020?
Yeah. Now, Brent had a couple of changes and I had a couple. I don't know if people have seen them.
I haven't had a chance to open my emails on a lot of this stuff, so I probably haven't. I've got some printed copies for a lot of them, and if it's not too lengthy, I could jot them in, or I could go find them in my email if you, if that's what you sent.
So certainly, my changes were only, they were only like changing typos and spelling my last name correctly.
Oh dear, I got it wrong?
And Judy's remote glorifications and then copy editing. I think, I think they're in good shape.
Yeah.
I didn't read anything that I, that I felt, I just didn't, I didn't recall happening or anything like that.
Yeah.
Okay, mine were pretty small changes, the one. Then you, you're lacking the.
What page are we on?
The last page, you're, you don't have the letter that Chris Chamberlain sent to Don, and I couldn't find it in my files either. But he'll get it. So maybe if you ask Don if he can send it to you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with him.
It's, the letter is from Carol and A.I. Anis, A-N-N-I-S.
Oh, her, her last name is A.I.N.I.S.?
No, her husband's name is A.I.
A.I. is his first name.
Okay.
And the last name is A-N-N.
So it's Carol and A.I.
Yep.
And A.
That appears in the text, too, but if you, if you find the.
Oh, yeah, I, I'd like to fix the text.
Yeah, well, you'll, you'll see the version that, that Brett and I edited, so it's pretty clear there.
Okay. Their last name is Ennis or Anis?
Anis with an A. And I don't know if A.I. is written A, little i or a big I, but I don't think it matters.
Okay.
Only if it's artificial intelligence.
So Brett, what, what is the spelling of your last name?
It's a C-H-E-I-K-E-S, and you're just doing an I-S.
Yes, okay. So is there anything else in here? I don't mind fixing typos. It's, I'd rather not send it over for publication full of stuff. If, if people have little things, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Well, do you want us to read them now or?
Or no, so there, you, you said you sent them.
Yes.
So I should find them in there.
And there's actually, it's in the OneDrive folder for.
Oh, go to the OneDrive, okay.
I did have one question on, on page two. The text on the, I don't know if this printed out the same way you had it, but the paragraph that starts the next discussion.
I've got that, yeah.
It says that Jared confirmed that an onsite will currently pumps water into two reservoirs. Are they irrigating on that field now or is that a future site?
Well, I, I had another thing in the note that said no wells yet, and I thought, did they, I didn't put that in the minutes because I was unsure of it. I didn't know if they meant there might be more wells later.
Yeah, we, we discussed that and that they would have to go to the water commissioners for approval of that.
For approval of the one well that.
If they were gonna do additional wells.
To add additional wells, so that you figure there's
Well, not.
There's one well.
No, they have to go to the water commissioners if they take it out of town water.
Yeah, not for, not for drilling.
They can take it out of the existing wells and they can put in more points. But I, they weren't doing more points now, but didn't John say they have some already?
Right.
Okay, well, if the well is there.
Well, nothing changed here.
But that was, I confirmed that in the later meeting we had.
Yeah, well.
But of course, I probably missed it in this one or didn't remember.
It does sound familiar to me, so maybe it's in the next one.
No, well, you, you had it that it currently pumps and, and that's if probably that's right.
I think I was concerned with them taking it out of the Mill River, because that, the Mill River has enough issues without being used much for irrigation, and I think John said they had wells already.
So do we have a motion to approve this amended?
They're moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mary. November 10th?
November 10th, yeah.
I had a couple of small changes and a question. And you can find the changes, and I think Brent fixed his name and had a couple of typos fixed. In, in the list of names at the top, you have BJ and then Scott. Is that supposed to be one person, BJ, Scott?
That's all I had. I, I can't, they were separate in the notes. They didn't look like they were together. Uh, some of what shows up on people's labels isn't really too informative. And sometimes you get somebody using his wife's.
Okay, well, if you.
I, I don't know anything about BJ or Scott or whether they're the same person.
Well.
But the way it was looking in in the notes apparently looked like, usually I draw a circle around it or something to connect them, but I do write fast, so maybe it's.
Is Brian Brian dominant?
Well, you know, I left it the way it was in the notes. And then I went through to see, did Brian say anything during the meeting, and I had nothing down. So I don't really know that either, except that there, there was, I suppose he might have said something that just didn't make it into the notebook, but it.
I don't think he was there, so.
And we use his, so if we didn't change our name in a timely manner, it would still come up, because when I go into his, when I initiate the meeting, I have to change my name from Brian. So if Don or I initiated it, it would come up initially as Brian.
Oh, it could have been that. I try to catch them all really soon and then check once or twice later, because while I'm writing, I can't really tell who's coming and going, but.
He did attend one, though, didn't he? I mean, not recent.
I mean, these lists are never guaranteed to be inclusive anyway, and they were, even when we met in person. You know, people have a choice of whether to sign their names or not on a sheet of paper, so.
I think he attended the previous one where we talked about, should we, should we change it or not? But I could be wrong.
I could just take it out because I don't, you know, especially with what Sarah just said about it might have just been a mis-ID of the login. And, and there was no notation of anyone named Brian having participated, which sometimes happens, but.
Yeah. Well, any comments or questions about the edits that were made? Anything else? Motion to approve?
Well, second that.
And I should just go to OneDrive to see whatever, I mean, is this all, there, there wasn't really, it's just Brian, Brent's name and deleting Brian's name?
Well, there are a few little edits that got made throughout the document.
Okay, so as long as people are voting on that, and I can go ahead and.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've been careful to make sure, at least if, if anyone is circulating anything as an email attachment, I'm throwing it into the OneDrive. And I think this is the one, Judy, where I made edits and then you made follow-up edits, and you did it right here in the OneDrive. Because I see your comment here on the OneDrive.
Well, I think it was the other way around, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I think it was the first one that I did it that way.
And Mary, at the late on page, I guess it's page four of the document, you had something in highlights about parking area shall be separated from any residential use by 20 feet, and you say, this is in my notes. Whereas it appear in the bylaws, and I think it was Judy who added the bylaw paragraph there, so.
Yeah.
I think you should be set.
Okay, that, that, yeah, I remember that thing.
Um, did you get your answers to the yellow highlighted things, Mary? Do you have one? Where does it appear in the bylaws about the parking?
Yeah, that's what he was just.
That's what Brett was just talking.
I, I gave her the paragraph.
Oh, that's, we now see the 17113. Gotcha.
And I have one other question at the back when you cite the.
Which, which, I'm not seeing it. Oh, you know what? I, I printed these maybe without color this time.
Okay, it's page three.
And which one is it? November 10th or October?
November 10th.
November 10th on page three.
Under Attorney Peter Irvine.
Oh, yes, I see it. Right, 171-13A, point F, comma, page 18, page 18. Okay, thank you.
And the last of when you, the site plan for one-way screening. It's spelled Whately, not Whately. I assume that's, that's their mistake.
Oh.
Very last page, last thing.
Mistake.
I remember they had missed.
Oh, yes, I, I did a cut and paste on that.
Okay, it looks like it, just checking.
If you want to ID it, absolutely, we should leave the error in.
No, you should, you should. You leave the error in. Leave it in, you should, because that's what it says.
Yep, that's what it says. So we have October 27th and November 10th approved as amended.
November 24th.
I'm sorry, no, November 24th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, curse. My name is misspelled. Sorry to just keep bringing.
Yes, I know. I'll, I'll try to fix it where it appears. I, I think I got off, I probably couldn't tell what I scribbled I from E in the very beginning when you first joined.
Right. This one, I guess I hadn't looked at.
These are very, very good minutes, Mary.
Oh, thanks. Oh, I know, page two here. I see there was a, the third little paragraph, it starts with, Tom stated that the board needs to have a toolkit. And then there was a Judy suggestion that the site plan approval will be conditioned for a period of X time. I don't know if we even need that. It didn't, I mean, I don't know if it wound up.
I don't know if you need it. If you, if you do, just put in. I don't know if you need it. If you, if you do, just put in X.
X, oh, yeah.
I was not specifying a time.
Maybe that's why I didn't have a time. Maybe it was just. Yeah, I'll do that.
You have the edits I made. Well, they're up, they're up on the. OneDrive.
I'm not in OneDrive. I, I don't, I won't make sure.
You can.
Go looking for something and cancel out the Zoom meeting.
No, don't worry about it, but you can find them.
Oh, yes, yes, I can find them. I have access to it, but in fact, maybe I can get them right now. I would like.
That's okay, that's.
Drive town of Whately.
So any other comments on this? Motion to accept?
They're moved. Second.
All in favor?
Brandt, I've got, um, OneDrive open. Did you? I don't see a folder for minutes, are.
It's other meetings.
It's on, oh, okay, it's within, all right, in meetings.
And then by year.
And 2020. So the draft minutes are there. Okay, and I see one that says Judy Markland. Slowly it opens.
Really trivial change, very tiny edits.
There we are. Okay, and they're in green, yeah, that, that all, I won't have any trouble with that, that, that all looks obvious. Okay.
Anyone else? What a docile crowd, boy.
We don't live in the past.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Eric, you've got to start saying it loud. You're not getting any of these in.
So now we go into 2021.
Uh, December 15th, do we do that?
That's what we're just doing.
Yes, we just did.
Oh, we did do, okay, did we?
I thought we just did November 24th.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay. Well, December 15th then.
Okay.
I have no opinion, I was not there.
Very thorough.
Any, anything you two have? Beyond what I did?
I'm good.
All in favor? Okay.
Yes, so moved and seconded.
January 26th.
Now, wait a second. So in the OneDrive folder for January 26th, 2021. Well, at least the minutes in that folder are dated January 26th, 2020 at the top.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a, something I didn't catch. But the first thing they say is you continue, the public hearings continued from December 15th, 2020.
Right, okay, so the, it is, should be at 2021 at the very top. And really, I was missing from that meeting? Nicholas was there. How could, why was Nicholas at the meeting in January of 2021?
But maybe this got missed by me the same way January 26th, 2020 did. Uh, I remember there was one that you weren't there for, but I think you've only missed one since you joined.
That's what I believe. It was the, the one in December.
Yeah.
And, and there was no overlap with Nicholas.
No.
Right, so, let's see, I can go back.
Take off Nicholas and add Brett.
Yeah, especially since my name appears later in the minutes, so it was obviously.
Well, there you go.
Unless I come off bad in these minutes, in which case just leave Nicholas.
So, let's see, and then there are some other things.
On page two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that the proper spelling of Tony Wan Seski?
He's Wan Seski.
Okay, not Wan Seki, okay.
This one's.
This is for, uh, this is the one on Masterson Road, is that right?
I'll double check his, his name.
I think it's Wan Seki, but that's.
It could be how it's pronounced.
It could be. I will double check.
In which case it's wrong in the previous one too.
Right.
Where would his name, I'm looking at the documents associated with the, and where would Tony's name appear? What document? Like the A and R plan?
Would he be on the engineering plan?
I don't think he drew those plans, I.
He's not on this special permit, that's him.
You certainly say it Wan Seki.
No, she's right, Mary's right. I see it in one of the special permit documents. Uh, it's the special permit application. And it's got a, he's a civil engineer. It's Anthony Wan Seski, W O N S E S K I. Okay. Point to Mary.
Okay.
Um, I. Do, I did just browsing over on page two. Um, fifth line up from the bottom, qualific fee actions.
My spelling isn't so good.
Yeah.
It's hard to see the spell check line and the underline at the same time.
Where are we looking?
I just fixed it in the OneDrive.
I inserted Judy noted it would be impossible to enforce any of these.
Oh, qualifications, yeah.
Are we thinking and reading or are we falling asleep?
Um, I'm definitely reading.
Okay. Just checking.
All right, the, I think that all looks, the rest looks good to me with the correction of various little typos. So move to approve as amended?
I'm not sure everybody's finished reading.
Okay, I withdraw my motion. I unmove.
I don't know. Tom?
I'm good.
I'm good too.
Remove? I move yet again to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that one. February 9th.
We have to vote. Bye. Anonymous.
We're going to February 9th now? Is that what you said?
Yep, yeah. I didn't edit this because I recused myself from the hearing, so I didn't think I should comment, but. Um, two things in the Zoom guests, uh.
Hold on a moment, please, I'm. I gotta get to February 9th.
Okay, so this is, uh, draft minutes in the One.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just backing out of January 26th here. Looks like it's loading, it's just taking a little while. Any minute. There we go. Okay, I'm in, uh, with the document. Where, where are we talking about?
Well, Neil's name is Doc D A C H.
Oh, that must, yes, I think that's the only place I hit the wrong key.
And Jared works for DMTC, not Whately Real Estate Holdings.
Oh, my goodness.
He's just so ubiquitous, you assume he.
Yeah, he's everywhere. He goes to all of them now. Medical condition treatment centers. If I correct this here, will that stay?
Yes, if you save it, it'll stay.
Okay. All right, what else do we have?
So, given this, oh no, oh, nevermind, Neil, Neil is with, uh. With the LaSalle operation, that's right.
Yeah, Neil and Jared, for some reason, they're.
Yeah, they, they look, in my head, they look very much alike.
Yeah.
So it looks like I see highlighted in yellow. That I O U language.
I think she's gotten it.
Okay.
Well.
Do you, Mary?
I was pretty confused about what it was at the time, except that I. I kind of thought I had figured out that. I thought he sent it to the board via chat during the meeting.
I did, I remember that.
I just don't, I, I wasn't included in that. I don't, I, I never got, I, I, I never saw it, I don't believe.
Understood, now. One thing I can tell you is that that language is in the final. Site plan conditions for Seven River Road, which is in the OneDrive. Or, um, which I'm looking at right now. I'm copying it, like, Mary, if I put this language in the chat now. Here and now, would that help you? Could you copy that or how do you want this language?
If you put it where?
In the chat for this current Zoom meeting, as I've just done.
Well, I, I don't do chat. I'm not sure what that means.
Okay, then let's try something else here. Um, what's the best way for me to give you the language you're looking for in these?
Copy and paste it and put it in the, in the, um. Documents reviewed section. At the end, after adjournment.
Okay. All right, Mary, um.
Just, just put a headline on it, it's something like chat message from Jared.
Right.
Right, in the meeting. And then quote the words.
So this might be item four. So I could do something like four.
So we don't need a document then? This will be it, it'll be right there.
Message from Jared. All right. I'm gonna try this. Now, Mary, you have this, uh, minutes document open?
Yes, should I close it and reopen it?
No, um. Let me try, let's. Save your version of it. Let me know when you've done that.
I've done that.
Okay. Let me see if, you know, I'm gonna do. I'm gonna save this in the folder. I'm just gonna add in the same folder. As these minutes in OneDrive. For February 9th. I'm just adding a version. Of the minutes document. That has plus BAC at the end of the file name. And I added that little bit about the chat message at the end.
Okay, so there will just be two documents for that date for minutes?
Yeah, you're, I, I think you, you, you'll just incorporate that into your document. I, I, I was just, I was a little nervous until I've. Done this with OneDrive, to have two people having the same document open. And making changes to that same document, I wasn't confident yet that OneDrive will.
Well, next time I.
Average everything.
Next time I can close it out and if, if need be, and if somebody's writing in it, they can have it all to themselves.
I'll tell you what, why don't you close your document out for now and just tell me when you've done that?
It's closed.
Okay.
And I see your additional one there.
Okay, now don't do anything yet.
No.
All right, we were in meetings of February 9th. I'll go into your original document. And. Okay. And we save it. No one else has the document open, right? Okay, well, I guess I, tell you what, it's not letting me save it for some reason. Okay, Mary, you should now be able to safely open the one with the plus BAC at the end. And that's your new working draft, with that, with your changes and the addition of the language from Jared Glansberger at the end.
Okay.
And delete the other one then, presumably?
Yeah, I'm, I just want.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yeah. Going to just change the file name to just say deletable. Okay. So are we done with February 9th?
Motion to accept?
Oh, so moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I recused, Mary. I think that's all I had, am I?
That was, uh, that was you, Judy, who recused?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're current through February 9th, is that right?
Yay. Mary, you'll get those to Lynn and Mamie?
Yes, I will.
After you rest up.
You know, there was, there was also, I ran across this thing about a planning board meeting on the 4th of August. The meeting was scheduled for 5 o'clock, and we hadn't gotten into a 5 o'clock swing yet. And I didn't join until 6:30, I had forgotten, I was out of the house and I forgot about it, and I, I came in at 6:30 after it had already been going for an hour and a half, and that, that was when everybody in Whately lost power in a storm. Only Judy was on, because I came in, you were using a battery device.
Well, no, I, I get it, I had it on data, cell data, my iPad does both Wi-Fi and data download.
Well, the, the, the only thing is, I, I really didn't, I wasn't at any of the meeting, people were talking when I came in, but I couldn't write any minutes because I'd missed the whole thing, we never came back to the meeting after the power outage.
Somebody send you, I thought I sent you something.
Well, I, I, I'll look again, because.
I'll go back and see what I can.
That was my first thought, was that Judy probably wrote the minutes for this.
I can remember seeing the minute, the, writing something that affected the meeting terminated abruptly due to a power shortage or something, power outage.
Well, I, I will.
I'll, I'll see if I can find something.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what date was that?
August 4th, she says.
Yeah, that was August 4th.
On August 25th, I have an email from Judy forwarding draft minutes from the August 4th meeting.
Okay, let me, I will check again for that.
And that did go to you, okay. And that was pre-Brent's time. So presumably, we approve those later?
So they were sent on?
They were originally sent on the 10th, and then they were resent by Judy on the 25th, and with a note, see you at 5.
Originally on the, okay.
So it might say on the minutes of the 25th whether they were approved or not.
Oh, yes, the minutes of August 4th were unanimously approved.
Aye. Check.
I'll just have to get a copy of them. I, that, that certainly makes sense to me, so I probably have them. I had them on the 25th, no doubt.
Mary, just out of curiosity, I'm curious what the ZBA did about urban grown?
Well, there was a, a problem with, we couldn't hold the, uh, whatever date it was scheduled for, we had to move it, because although I had advertised in the paper and sent out the mailings and everything, announcing, you know, the legal notice, I forgot to send it to Lynn and it didn't get posted. So we held the meeting and immediately continued it, and we're going to, let's see, what, we're doing an extra meeting for those guys too. On, uh, it's this month.
I think, we can look on the, just nothing's happened.
Third week, but no, nothing's happened, it's still.
22nd.
Yeah, that sounds right, we will, we will address.
Put that on my calendar, I want to go back again.
Yeah.
They are very entertaining gentlemen.